Ken.
Okay, okay, Ken's not here. Okay, we'll go ahead and get the meeting underway. We got a great schedule. Here today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. We have one item to discuss this afternoon in our work session. And the first item is to talk about Lytec, which is our low-income housing tax credit program offered through the state of South Carolina. And we want to go over what that means and how that impacts our efforts towards affordable housing here in the city of Greenville. And we are happy to have Brian Brown, who is the CEO of our Greenville Housing Fund, here to present this afternoon on this information. Thank you, Brian.
Hey, Brian.
Is he just here with us?
Yes.
So, I mean, you know.
He's just, he's just gonna maybe get an office over here at City Hall. He's not wanting Brian.
Yeah. Do you hear the? Yeah, some of that. Well, you know, I mean. Moving the chalk. That was enthusiastic. What can I say? What can I say? All righty. Well, thank you for having me. We have some guests that we will introduce later in the program. I am going to walk you through sort of an introduction to the low-income housing tax credit program, because I know we talk a lot about it, but I don't think it's, you know, very well understood. And, and so just wanted to sort of set this up that we rely on the low-income housing tax credit program to develop affordable housing, simply because it's, it's the most successful public-private partnership program that the government's ever really produced. And it's a federal program that provides tax credits to developers in exchange for building affordable rental housing for lower income and work and wage-earning families, up to 60% of the area-meaning income. So if you, just a little bit of history about the program. It was created in 1986 by the Tax Reform Act. Importantly, it is the largest source of funding for new affordable rental housing in the United States. It is responsible for over 3 million units across the country, and it typically produces around 100,000 new units per year. And so I know there's all that this, sometimes there's tension between, hey, we're struggling with the Qualified Allocation Plan and the criteria, because it's highly competitive. And can't we do more affordable housing outside of the program? Well, if you understand that this program finances 90% of all affordable housing in America, we have to make this program work for us in Greenville. And I think there's good news on that point. So, which we will get to in a second, but, you know, I think we want, we, we, we want to make this program work for our community. And so I think it's, you know, just spending some time, understanding the program is helpful. So, units funded under this program must be affordable for people earning no more than 60% of the area-meaning income. And as you will recall, we've talked a lot about what does affordable housing mean? It means different things for different people, and it's based on your income. But at the foundation, it means that no matter what you earn, you're not paying more than 30% of your income towards affordable housing. So if you're earning at 50% area-meaning income, you're going to pay 30% of that income towards your rent, and that's what this program allows. So, how does it work? Federal tax credits are awarded through a formula based on population. So, South Carolina receives its tax credit allocation based on our state's population. And as we all know, Greenville is a population center in the state. And so we're always advocating for our fair share of these resources in our community. Also, South Carolina started a state credit program in 2020. And Dorothy and others have been pretty involved in, and the mayor and others. When we, when we launched that state credit program, it had a lot of interest. And so there were a lot of projects that were coming in, both the 4% and 9% program. And it created kind of a concern at the legislative level, level that we were over-consuming the state credit program. And we had that Senate Bill 739 and subsequent, and subsequent legislation that put a cap. So we now have a cap on our state credit program, $20 million annually. And 739 allocated $100 million to get all of those projects that were kind of stalled over the finish line. So just a little bit about the state credit program. We need that particularly in the 4% bond program, which I'll talk about in a second, because 4%, 9%, as the percentages suggest, you get less than half of what you get in the 9% program. The 9% program is highly competitive. The 4% bond program has actually become highly competitive, because in order to make it work, you need the state credits, and you are now competing for them, because there's a cap on them. And so now both programs in the state of South Carolina have become highly competitive. I think I've already said that, you know, the state administers both those programs. And Qualified Allocation Plan is the state policy document that sets out the competition and the criteria and how projects are awarded and funded. And then, at the, at the end of the day, developers use these tax credits to raise capital from investors in lieu of paying taxes. And that's kind of the notion of the credit. So these credits are claimed over 10 years to finance construction. So if you get a $2.5 million award, times 10, you're really getting $25 million. Then we syndicate it. You get 86 cents on the dollar if we're lucky. Right now, it goes up. It's been as high as 95. It's been as low as, I don't know, it's been low in the past. And so the property must be maintained as affordable housing for an initial compliance period of 15 years. And then there's an extended use agreement period that you sign going into this. So ultimately, these developments are affordable for a minimum of 30 years. Most projects that are affordable housing, at the end of 30 years, or somewhere between 20 to 30, go through what we call re-syndication, where you apply for another tax credit allocation to do a significant rehabilitation. You sign the thing, and the clock starts over again. So we've got a lot of projects in this state that are, you know, 30, 40, or more years old, that have been financed through this program. There's a lot of compliance, as you can imagine, with a program of this nature. And credits can be recaptured for non-compliance. And part of that is ensuring that a person who is income-eligible is served by this precious housing resource. And so certifying tenant income is really important in this program. And property managers like Taylor and his team spend a lot of time making sure that that information is documented and verified, and we don't have people over-income living in these housing resources. Investors typically maintain close supervision to ensure long-term viability and compliance in this program, because we, we work with a host of debt providers, syndicators, investors who are buying these credits, and we don't want to get in trouble with any of them. Next slide, please. So this is kind of the main slide of how this program works, if you will. So on the left, you can see a 9% example. And you can see that in a 9% deal, you get, and then another thing about this slide is, if you think about it, in the 9% program, I think I've shared this before, so currently in the 2024 round, you could go up to 100 units in the 9%. Moving forward, it's been lowered to 80. And the 4% side, the projects tend to be larger. And so usually, there's a minimum required of 70. But a lot of times, you'll see 150, 180 units of multifamily being developed in the 4% program, because you've got a lot more units to spread that debt around. So you see, on a 4% transaction, you're using way more debt than you are tax credit equity, and it's the reverse in the 9%. And so smaller 9% deals, larger 4% deals, kind of how it works. And then you put together this complicated capital stack to finance these projects. And a lot of times, it could involve, you got your federal credit, you got your state credit, you might have a mill credit, or abandoned building credit, or some other form of credit. You've got soft funds, like from the Greenville Housing Fund, and then you've got like a first mortgage. So you can have sort of the Big Mac of financing. You've got layered financing, and there's a lot of layers in that capital stack. And that's essentially, that's essentially what this shows. I've heard it once or twice.
Brian, help me with the DDF. Snack on them, I'm not familiar with. DDF, you want to speak to what that stands for?
Oh, deferred developer fee. So in these project, developers earn a fee. And a lot of times, if the capital stack is short, they can defer, defer up to 50% of their fee as a source of capital that they put into the capital stack, and then they get repaid over time through cash flow. So just, it can be, you take your fee, and you kind of capitalize it as an investment into the project, and then get paid over time. Good question. Any other questions?
Why did I think that was 2%? You've got it as 5%?
Yeah. Oh, that's just an example of like, in the capital stack, yeah. So eligible expenses are typically, you know, site work. So you have a site, you have to make it ready to do a development. Financing, third-party reports, so environmental, engineering, those kinds of, those kind of costs. And then the big one is the actual, you know, hard construction, insurance, certificate of insurance, and then land. And then when it comes to land, it's an interesting example, because in the QAP, there are points if land is donated into a development. And so that can be a distinguishing characteristic in a competitive application that we've taken advantage of.
So if the city were to donate land into the Q, we can get points for that, so then that helps when we start looking at our, our application processes.
And then finally, at the end of the day, you know, we're all here using this program, because we want to provide a high-quality, affordable home for people in our community. And by doing that, we actually help stabilize families. We free up their budget to spend on other things, savings, education, saving for homeownership, going to school, buying a car. And we want to be responsible stewards of these resources, and we want to make Greenville accessible and attainable for all kinds of people who want to live here. So I'm going to pause here.
Thank you, Brian.
And if there are any questions.
Are there any questions for Brian at this point?
Yes.
Councilmember Dow.
You know I'm not giving you anything hard here. Okay, one of your slides had the three quotas of city projects. Go back about 3%, the first one with the photos, it shows Gateway, Riley, and Renaissance. Renaissance.
Yeah.
So, note.
Oh, there it was.
Gateway at the Green, now leasing. Push that, media. My question is, how does the, how do the pipeline of people? What are their pathways to qualify for an apartment at Gateway at the Green, to pre-qualify? There are different entities in town that can pre-qualify them, but it's a process. Can you give a snippet on how one says, oh, I see that sign, now how do I qualify to get in?
So, that sign is up because they're initiating, you know, what I consider to be pre-leasing, because it's not yet got a certificate of occupancy. And so they're going to try to create a pipeline of applicants that they then start processing. So when units are ready to be occupied, they can quickly lease up.
There's nothing unusual about that. Okay, but here I am, a person. Who can I go to?
So you would, I mean, they got the website up there. You would go on that website. Presumably, there's a place to put your information in, and at a point when they're ready, let's just pretend that it's tomorrow. They got their application process ready. They're going to email people, hey, you signed up. You're interested in our property. Here's an application. Fill it out. People fill out the application, turn it in, and they start going through and verifying, you know, their income and their eligibility and their, and their tenant, you know, there are tenant selection criteria that every property has, so.
Does the city provide any assistance in placement of this brand in our CDBG system? Do we pre-qualify people at all? So this was, this was a struggle we saw in the McLaren. It could be a struggle with this. But I'm, I'm trying to get that pipeline of people to flow smoothly, you know.
I, yeah.
How does that message get?
So we, we, we promote it. I mean, so they'll be marketing this. We use the channels we have through our nonprofit partners, who work with a lot of families who are struggling to find an attainable place to live. We're working right now at the Riley and the Gateway, because we haven't talked about this, but those two properties have some set-aside units that are targeting extremely low-income households, and some households that have a connection with the mental health system, for example. And so at the Riley, there are 19 of those units. At Gateway, I think it's 14, if I remember correctly. And of those units at the Riley, nine are going to be referred through the mental health system. And the other 10, we're establishing criteria as we speak, where we're going to offer bonus points if a household is referred by one of our nonprofit service provider partners, because they're currently living in a motel, or they're, you know, not in stable housing. We want to prioritize these units, so we're serving the households most in need and who are known to our system providers, so we can create flow in our system. So if somebody's in a, in a program at United Ministries and can move in here, then that program spot comes open for the next person in need, for example.
I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that Gateway at the Green in particular, which is located behind Haywood Mall, was cited as, you know, probably one of the best locations we could put due to access to jobs in the area.
That's right.
So this is, is, is a workforce issue. The mall is right there.
That's right.
The Health is right there. Montse Core is right there. All of those entities, you know, have employees that fit these income levels. So I just, you know, I'm trying to get that word out. Okay.
Yeah.
Next question. You said that projects are affordable for a minimum of 30 years under this program. There are those, it hadn't always been that way, right? I mean, aren't there some that are, there are properties in the city that were affordable, and now I guess that term has ended, and they quickly get out?
It's been on the source of financing. You've had properties that have used home resources, you know, housing opportunities made equal, or the home partnership, or CDBG, things like that. There's different, there are different terms with different programs.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm trying to get out there is that our challenge is both people who've been displaced from the city, or people who've never lived in the city and want to at these income levels, that, that help us fulfill our workforce needs, but also people who have lived in them that are getting displaced, and we know of some examples that have occurred, because the units they were living in, given their lack of economic mobility, they're still living in over a number of years, and then they go to market rate, and then they're displaced because of that. So it's another challenge of something that is affordable turning to market rate.
Yes.
That kind of.
There's all, yeah.
All right, last question. This is philosophical.
Okay.
I didn't know this about the 4%, that it tends to go towards larger. Is there a max on how many units they could have in a 4% deal?
I don't know if there's technically a limit.
There's a limit of 70.
But there's a minimum, and then the maximum is usually, you know, zoning.
Okay.
You know, what will a location absorb?
Let me ask you this, then.
I mean, a 300-unit project in Greenville is probably a non-starter.
Well, a 300-unit project in the city is a non-starter, because I don't know where it would go. Right?
So you are constrained by ground.
By our, by our geography.
Yeah.
And so 4% projects, is this true that they would tend to go to county parcels that are considered?
I'd say there's, I'd say there's, so there are some ways to use, there's a portfolio, application process. And then the other one, the word just slipped my mind, but there's two other ways to kind of stitch together. Like you take a four, like if you're trying to get above 70, you got a 48 unit and a 65 unit, and they're in the same kind of, they're, they're not together. You can put those two together in a 4%.
Do they have to be continued?
Nope.
Okay, all right, that's all. Like, that's okay.
But there's things like that that you can do.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, the, the timeline on the 30-year requirement, didn't that used to be seven?
No.
I think Riverwalk was seven.
I, I don't think that was a tax credit deal.
Okay.
Newmarket? Yeah, so that's what, see, thank you, Taylor. That's a good example. Different sources of financing have different terms.
Thank you. Well, Brian, I understand that you have some very good news to share with us today.
I do.
The council's not on, keeps everybody waiting.
So we've had some tremendous success in this program here in the city of Greenville. And let me start by, oh, yeah, let me start by saying, we're going to share with you, keep going. So, we have three projects, three, that have been awarded under the 9% program.
This, just in the last few weeks?
Officially, we knew this one was coming. The other two, I mean, we felt, well, we felt good about. The next one, wasn't sure about. The third one, until more recently, and Joe can explain that. But we've got Southern Side East, we've got the official notice, and we are marching towards closing. We are closing on this and beginning, beginning construction in January.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How many units is that?
And so this is 93 units of, go to the next slide, please, 93 units of affordable housing for seniors. You know, at or below 60% in general, but next slide. But in this one, we were blessed that we pursued, in advance of our application, we, we pursued project-based vouchers, and we received an allocation, which gave us extra points. And so we have 55 project-based vouchers. And this will be, allow us to serve seniors at or below 30% area-meaning income. That says 60, but it's really 30. These will be the lowest-income seniors in our community. And the vouchers help pay the rent, which is why this works so well. And so we're very excited about that. And then.
Well, and remind everyone where this project is.
Oh, sorry. This is at the corner of West Washington and Hudson, right behind Lila May Rock Plaza. And where the plaza is, this project will bookend that plaza and down by Unity Park, and we're very, very, very excited.
That's very good. We understand. Yes, that's great. And then, but we understand there's another project.
There is another project. Even more, even more good news.
One last thing on that project. It is not lost on me. This is the first of the Unity Park proximity. And this was part of the promise of Unity Park. This was part of the vision, to your great credit, Mayor, of, of what Unity Park could bring to this community, and, and this land donation was part of that.
And I think you can see the design characteristics of this project. It's a very high design, something we're going to be very, very, very proud of for many, many years to come. And I would say the same about what Taylor's getting ready to share.
Yes.
Did, did we acquire the horseshoe part of that?
Yes.
Yes, GHF, GHF did, yeah.
If y'all would welcome Taylor Davis with NHT. Good talk, Brian.
Thank you.
And Taylor is here to talk about the next project that was awarded, that we just found out about, which is one I'm very excited about.
Yes, so hopefully, the, the, the name of the alliance is one that is familiar to everyone in the room, or most everyone. We've been working on it for about four years. And so on behalf of James Jordan with Jordan Development, and are friends with HF Housing, an affiliated organization of Hollingsworth Funds, our development partners on the alliance. We are proud and pleased that we did also receive our notification of our funding of both federal and state credits, and are excited about moving forward for this project. The design of the project is essentially unchanged since we went through the, the PD process three years ago. We, originally, we're intending this to be 112 affordable units, and we were able to make some tweaks to come in. I think Brian mentioned earlier, a cap of 100 units under this 9% cycle, 2024, so that's about 100 units. The affordability for, for this, this project, we, the average income of all 100 units will be 53%, give or take. That number will move around a little bit over the next couple of years. But we do have a range of incomes from 20% of area-meaning income, all the way up to 70% of area-meaning income. So it'd be a very diverse income profile for the alliance. Also, a unique attribute will be about 4,200 square feet of commercial space. That will be in the building. Those are actually two four-story buildings at the corner. Just assumed everybody knows where this is. It's the Purple Door Church on Lawrence Road.
Orange at Ackley.
Orange at Ackley. So the buildings that you see there are at that corner. And so the 4,200 square feet of commercial space is in the building facing Lawrence Road. Total development cost, just if you're, you know, the, you know, this will have a very urban design. Our friends at NPS has helped us with the project to get us to this point. It's approximately a $38 million total development cost for the project. And I think it will be one little set of statement on this quarter. I think it'll be the first, I think, I know it'll be the first new construction project on the Lawrence Road corridor that I think really conforms exactly to Greenville 2040. Two four-story buildings, more urban, close to the sidewalk. We're excited about getting started. Hopefully, between now and probably the second quarter of next year, we, we pretty much have all the architectural work done. So just got to go through the permitting process here. We'll get started on here shortly.
Demolition on the site, that's a kind of blighted site.
Yes, so that will come down when we have a project closing, which will probably be in the second quarter. I think we'll have a more refined, unfortunately, you know, due to the funding source, if we were to demolish the buildings now or in the near future, it would cause us to be ineligible for certain bucks, but.
And your hopeful opening is when?
It's, it's a longer construction timeframe. I would say a good, probably 20 months is the, you know, so it'll take a little bit longer to build this one than a garden, you know, three-story garden project.
Taylor, I've been doing urban planning for a long time, longer than I'd like to admit. And I do not recall a project ever receiving a standing ovation from the public in the neighborhood, at Planning Commission, in all of my years, with the exception of this project. And this was, this is very exciting for the, for our Lawrence Road corridor, or all of our neighborhoods that surround this area, have been behind this project from the very beginning. We were always excited and hopeful to see it. So now that it's coming to fruition is a great, I think, just great news for us and our community. We're very excited to see this project move forward. I think you do have a slight PD modification because of the change in the units. That's actually going to be on the PPM agenda, that will be next Tuesday at Unity Park, for anyone who wants to go and see the revised designs. But we're really excited to see this project come out of the ground. So, and we really appreciate you being here today to help us make the announcement of the good news.
Kudos.
So that's 193 units of new construction in the city of Greenville, totaling about $70 million.
Yes, Councilmember Dow.
A question, then three comments. The question, you said 38 million?
37, yeah. 37.9.
Okay, so, so take note of the cost per unit. Like, it is very expensive to develop these projects, and, and, you know, you always have to keep that in mind. I've said it before, it's, I'm going to reiterate it, this is a catalytic project for this corridor, which was identified in GBL 2040 as a main corridor to seek the higher-density development along here. Taylor breaking through this one is just, I think, going to do great things for Lawrence Road. It is not lost on me that he is a local developer. It is not lost on me that he is a local developer. I know where you live. I know how to find you. It's very easy. And I think that that gives us a sense of pride having a local developer take on such a project. I also want to give kudos to Joseph Cass, who's sitting here. I was there, I think, the very first time developers came into the Nickel Town Neighborhood Association meeting talking about such a project. And whereas you might have seen a standing ovation from that time, that was, that was, my palms were sweating and I wasn't even on council yet. So, so I have intersected with Joseph multiple times at Nickel Town Neighborhood Association meetings. He's done a great job partnering with the community, listening to the community. The community picked the name, did they not, the alliance? And it, that takes time and a will of a developer to do that. And I think they've done everything right in this. And the only thing that went wrong was it got caught up in the SV housing pause, you know, that just really cost us a couple of years on it. So I appreciate you sticking with it. I believe you purchased the land outright at that point and have sat on it, you know, and that doesn't.
We're ready to go.
So, you know, he took a lot of risk in that and I just, I'm really grateful for y'all's resilience through this. So thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Any other questions or comments for Taylor?
I just want to underline what was said about the neighborhood participation, which you brought it up, it's like the same thing. Really, all of these projects, including the ones earlier, went through a process. The neighborhoods actually supported the projects at the end and that's really significant.
Somebody's clapping on screen. I can't see here, but I see a little clap, a couple of arms.
One of the things I do want to say is that, if you, you may not remember it, but there are, there's a new little development directly behind us on the other side. This will help that particular neighborhood to stay safer, okay? Because there was a lot of problems. The other thing is because of the great development that's going to happen, the flooding that they have experienced before will go away. And I'm just saying, I want to please make sure we remember that and try to engage because they were not necessarily engaged in all of the, all of the meetings, but they need to be as well because they will, they will receive great protection by having this development there.
And that's your former roommate, right?
Oh, oh, yes, she lives a little bit further down. Oh, yes, she'd be happy.
Hi, Swerve, Taylor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Taylor. And we have one more announcement to make. And Joe probably came in the furthest from anyone, anyone for this meeting today. Joe Eddy is here with us from Boston and flew in last night for the next announcement. So, Joe, we're happy to have some more good news to share.
My name's Joe Eddy. I'm president of GE Properties. So we, we actually bought the Greenville Summit Blue Rhino six years ago. And we did, if you guys remember, we did the first Bailey Bill in the state on it. And so Greenville Summit's an existing 100-unit, 101-unit senior building. I think what's a little unique about this is it was originally done in the 19, well, it's a 100-year-old building, but it was, they turned into affordable housing in the 70s and they used another program, the Section 8 program. And so one of the great things about our building is residents only paid 30% of their income, right? So our average resident makes about $1,000 a month. It's mostly social security. So they're paying about $300. You know, if they just had the old Lytec program, the Lytec rents would be about $1,028, be more than they actually make. So our property, for example, last year, we had 20 new residents move in and 10 of them were previously homeless. So, you know, we've, we've done a lot. I mean, I think the city has a lot of great nonprofits. We've done a lot with the First Presbyterian Church right across the street. For those who don't know, it's on Richardson in West Washington, right there downtown. And, you know, they've helped with residents that don't, you know, they're often, they're coming from a motel, they're coming from a shelter and, you know, working with them on getting a bed, you know, getting pots and pans. And, you know, we have a full-time residence service corner that we pay for and that helps. We're very much a, you know, a hand up, we're not hand out type of people. And I think it, you know, we're working with our residents to be self-sufficient, you know, after being, you know, wherever they were, you know, if they were homeless or not. But we bought it, we put it, if you guys remember, we put almost $3 million into it. It looks fabulous when you walk in. This is what it looks like right, right now. And you say, well, why do you need all this money? And, and the reason is it's a 100-year-old building. And so we got into the cast iron pipes that are 100 years old. We have a facade that's 100 years old. If you drove by, unnamed storm right before the hurricane basically caused tremendous damage on the corners. It's like this thing that came out and, and it's, you know, beautiful historic pieces. So we had to like emergent, we had to do an emergency so it didn't fall on residents or other people and took that down. It's going to go back up as part of this, but it's, it's over $16 million of work that's going in between pipes and new, you know, we have a 100-year-old elevator. We have a lot of, all the guts of it is old. We're going to be renovating all the units for ones that we haven't done recently. So I think that's, you know, it's a fabulous project for, in a great location. You guys may ask, we actually want to, we have a parking lot right next to it. We want to build another 50 units there. The rules of this whole program, as Brian explained, is only two, two projects in the city, or actually in the county can be funded. Fortunately, guys have better developers here than in Boston. And so we're going to come in third, like fifth in the state, but third in, you know, in the county. And so we work to get that. We'll, we'll keep on applying and keep on competing and hopefully eventually beat your, your local developers here maybe at some point. But, but yeah, so we like to do that. And similar with that project, you know, we partnered with the, the housing authority here and we have vouchers for all of those as well. So maybe another senior project. So we'll, we'll keep on trying to do that.
And this helps to preserve the existing units that we have there so that we don't lose those units out of, out of our housing stock.
To your point, as Brian said, this, this project is in year 22 or something like that. So there's like eight years remaining. And so we'll re-up the 30-year piece. We also, we did put on the Bailey Bill, so we had, I think we have like 14 years remaining. So we probably go, come back and work with you guys and just kind of reopening that. But, but yeah.
Is this on the historic registry?
It is, yes.
And so you, and you say the corners are going back, back up?
So we're working with a local architect. McTerry is our architect and yes, we're, we're very well aware and we're working through it. We just unfortunately was like.
And they just fell down, right?
It like literally was like, we're very lucky it didn't hit anyone. I mean, we had engineers up there six months before and they're like, these are fine and you guys live here. I mean, the storms were like crazy, right?
Bad week.
Bad week, yeah, so bad week for us too.
It is so beautiful.
That they're.
I mean, it is, it's a great place. I'm serious. If any of you are interested in taking pictures or maybe even having a small wedding reception, I'm happy to.
We'll take the wrap there, thank you.
It is gorgeous. If I'm in there Saturday, give me a little tour.
I might have made a wedding reception.
Well, thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
For this. And does anyone else from council have any questions or comments? But this is exciting to learn about how Lytec is improving the city of Greenville and our affordable housing. Once we learned of these three awards, are these, were these the most in the state? Do you know if this was the most in the state in one area?
I believe so.
It's got to be.
And so it was just, it's obviously a great thing that we have this as an option. And just as a reminder, because affordable housing is very difficult, there's a lot of, there's a lot of tools in the toolbox, there's a lot of complications. But when we have the opportunity to highlight some projects and some successes, we want to make sure that we're doing that. So we appreciate our media partners being here today to help us with this. We appreciate our developers coming in and making time out of their day today to be here and help with this. So thank you all very much and we're very excited about your project.
Thank you.
One question, and this may be for you. Is there any potential of raising the cap?
Yes, so I, I, you know, I think from just being an observer, I think the cap was, Brian, the cap was placed to really just make sure there's more predictability and certainty in the credit itself. And I don't know the answer to that other than the legislature seems to have a history of putting caps or sunsets on things and then seeing how it goes and looking at opportunities to extend sunsets or increase caps.
But I think we've got to, you know, you get something like this and then you think, okay, well now what's, we got to do better the next year, right? We are not the system structure so that we, we have had two 100% success years in '23 and '24, largely thanks to Brian's and the partner's diligence in getting both projects allowed for the county in the city of Greenville. We couldn't have done any better on the Lytec program, I guess is a way of summing it up. With the new, and it could have been zero, it could have been one, it could have been two. We got two for two consecutive years in the city. With the new QAP, it is, it is not going to be like this next year or until that change, you know, if the QAP is changed, at best, we would get one.
Well, I would just say that there are policy reasons for the state to want to spread these resources around. I think the point I made early on in my presentation is you, the state receives, the credit allocation receives based on population. And the reality is that 80% of the state's population resides in eight camps and we're one. And so we want our fair share of these resources. And to Russell's point and what John was saying, the state credit cap, I do believe, could be increased. And I believe there's probably political support for it, at least in one chamber of the legislature. We have work to do in the other to promote that. And then I think to get the QAP in a more favorable place for Greenville, the best path I see for that is if Congress were to expand the programs and more resources were coming to the state of South Carolina, then we could go and reasonably argue to increase, hey, let's go back to two or three per county because we have more resources. And I think there's interest in Congress for that. And so we just have to wait and see.
But keep in mind though, is it not true that it's, it's all how you score? It's how your project scores? And you gain points through different avenues, not the least of which is partnerships from public partners, private partners, certainly the city's a partner. In order to maintain this level of success, and I think we're working internally on this, we are going to need more partners at the table, no doubt about it.
Well, everyone in this room has been a great partner, so.
But it's beyond, it's beyond 206 South Main Street, is my point.
And land donation is still one of the most significant things we can do. It's just not the only answer.
Well, thank you all very much. It was great. Oh, yes, Councilmember Fleming, why don't you wrap it up?
What I want to say is the advertisement, the people who are in need right now, we have several people who've been contacting me about being homeless now because of the lean. And they may or may not have been on a list, but, but we need to look a little bit harder and a little bit closer at those particular lists in order to help those people find some place to stay.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Taylor. Thanks, Brian. Congratulations.
Take travels home.
Thank you.
President of the spear.
Yes, yes, they're, all will be available for media. Lauren will handle that for us. Thank you, Lauren. All right, Mr. Mayor, we are ready to move into executive session, sir.
I got a motion first.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, okay.
Thank you, yes, just want to make sure to be heard on our recording.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Y'all have several items to discuss, time permitting, in executive session this afternoon, Code Sections 34, 70A, 22, 3, and 5. Perspective contracts for public side of partnerships for a conference center, including funding sources. Perspective contract for the redevelopment of City Hall for West End Parkman's ability. For PPP with the Arena District for improvements to their campus. Potential contract for the purchase of several acres in the city along Lawrence Road, I was for discussion. Appointment of persons to a public body. Update on the personnel matter.
Is that all?
No. Discussion matters covered by attorney-client privilege regarding zoning litigation. Perspective contract with an entertainment venue on South Main. And discussion of expansion of city services and a perspective contract for urban design on South Main Street. And now that's.
Give it a hour?
We got it.